This is Ellen, and yes, the screen looks great.
Okay, good. Yeah, sorry. Go ahead and pass it to the chair to officially kick off the meeting.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I will bring the meeting of June 21st, 2021 of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic and the which is one nation, one nation under God, indivisible, et al.
A roll call, please.
Lisa, you're.
Sorry, yes, I just realized Commissioner Yakapony is absent this evening. I'll start with Commissioner Clements.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Vice Chair Ruth.
Present.
And Chair Garvey.
Present.
All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone in the waiting room who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? If if there is, you can use the raised hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or you can press star nine on your phone. Sarah, anyone in the waiting room?
Not at this time.
All right, moving on, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our June 7th, 2021 meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
None here.
None here.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Clements.
Hi.
Commissioner Bradley.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ruth.
Yes.
And Chair Garvey.
Yes. All right, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. I'll read the procedure now for a public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion on the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers will be called upon by the last three digits of their phone number and should take their and should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. The hearing this evening is 777 Industrial Road, APN 046-100-360, and 046-100-070, and 046-100-080. Request for design review, conditional use permit, variance, transportation demand management plan, and initial study mitigated negative declaration for an addition and renovation of the existing building for a life science research and development use. Lisa, does staff have a presentation on this item?
Yes, Lisa Costa Sanders will be presenting this evening. Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Lisa Costa Sanders, Principal Planner. We'll go ahead and start off with the next slide. The subject site consists of two lots, a flag lot and a smaller lot used for surface parking along Industrial Road. The combined site area is approximately 2.88 acres in area. The site is currently developed with a 68,683 square feet auto sale and repair facility for the Honda dealership. The site is located within the heavy industrial zoning district and planned industrial general plan land use designation. The site is bordered by Industrial Road and Highway 101 and surrounded by commercial buildings. This graphic was prepared for the East Side Vision Study Area and shows the study area boundaries as well as proposed developments within the boundaries. The City Council initiated the East Side Vision Study to guide development in this area, including community benefits, street standards and transportation connectivity, and land use forum. The study is currently underway and scheduled to be complete in September. The City Council requested that all projects within the study area that include a request for a planned development zoning designation be considered after the completion of the study. The project before you is not subject to that stipulation as it complies with the underlying zoning with the approval of the requested entitlements before you. I also wanted to orient the commission to the proximity of the recently approved and proposed developments to this project. So as you see, that orange project shown number 2777 Industrial Road, thank you, Lisa, is right immediately adjacent to a proposed development at 888 Branston and closely completed life-size development at 887 Industrial Road known as Radian 25. All of the approved and proposed developments on this map, with the exception of a proposed hotel at 501 Industrial, are all life science uses. Excellent. The site was formerly utilized by Liquid Carbonic starting in the late 1950s, and that was acquired and operated by a PAXA from approximately 1996 to 2003 for the manufacturing, repackaging, and distribution of industrial gases. As I indicated, the site is currently developed with an auto sales and repair facility with at-grade cover parking utilized by the Honda dealership. The applicant, Presidio Bay Ventures, acquired the property and proposes to redevelopment for life sciences. Next slide. The applicant proposes to renovate and add on to the existing building to develop a four-story, 150,775 square-foot life science building with at-grade parking and landscaping improvements. The requested entitlements include a variance, conditional use permit, design review, and transportation demand management plan. And now I'll walk through the commission with each of those entitlements. The request for a variance is from the floor area standards and specifically to exclude the covered parking area, about 28,320 square feet, from the floor area calculations. The existing building was constructed to provide ongoing access to the monitoring wells as part of the remediation efforts for, as well as observation of the groundwater contamination at the site. The cleanup is being conducted by a PAXA, which is considered the responsible party for the contamination under the authority of the San Antonio County Environmental Health Department. And as you see from this graphic highlighted in yellow, the site includes many monitoring wells that are maintained by PAXA. And as you can see from the location of the wells, they really cover a large portion of the property and really limits the development opportunities. So with the Honda dealership, they were quite creative and found a way to build above those monitoring wells that still allow continued access to them by placing at-grade parking beneath the building. On the next slide, you see that staff finds that the required findings to grant variance can be met at this site. The presence of the active groundwater monitoring wells is exceptional and extraordinary. The monitoring wells present a physical hardship that limits the development opportunity at the site. The granting of the variance will not be detrimental as evaluated in the mitigated negative declaration, and the project is consistent with the general plan as well as zoning. The conditional use permit is requested to allow two stair towers. Both comply with the 16-foot height projection but not the corresponding setback from wall face without the issuance of the conditional use permit. The code requires that for each foot you're above the 50-foot height limit for a tower, you're required to step that element in one foot from the face of the wall. And in this case, as you see, it either projects away from or is flat with the face of the building wall. So the code does allow the provision for a conditional use permit to be issued by the planning commission. The stair towers are centrally located on the building, but large setbacks from adjacent properties. The stair towers add to the architectural interest of the building, and staff is supportive of the conditional use permit request. Next, for design review. This facade is the northern-facing elevation, which is the main entrance to the building. The renovated building would maintain much of the existing footprint that seeks to create a more uniform and larger dimension compared to the existing building and would include changes in wall planes and building heights. The design shifts the building from a dominantly concrete facade to one of glazed glass with variation in materials and patterns, as well as offset floors to accentuate sections. The proposed exterior building materials include brushed aluminum slab covers, spandrel or opaque bird safe glass, exterior glazing and cement plaster. The facade for this stair tower would be perforated metal with backlighting to provide greater contrast with the building's face. The next view is a rendering of the building shows the north and west-facing elevations. The building is three stories of life science use above covered parking area and does comply with the 50-foot height limit. You can also see the rooftop landscaped amenity feature that would be available for building occupants. The next view is of the building along Highway 101. Here you can see the south and east-facing elevations, as well as that tucked undercover parking area. Staff is supportive of the architectural design of the building. The applicant has also submitted a transportation demand management plan with measures to achieve 20% truck reduction. That includes bicycle parking, repair station showers, changing facility, as well as a commuter program with marketing and outreach to encourage transportational dominance. This TDM plan has been reviewed by the city and county associations of government, and they found it to meet the requirements of the county's congestion management program. As well, the city's transportation consultant also reviewed the plan and found it to comply with the city's requirements. On the next slide, I've shown you the distance the site is from Caltrain. So it's approximately a half mile to the Caltrain station, which is about a 12-minute walk. And then finally, a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. That analysis found that the proposed project would not result in any significant impacts to the environment with the implementation of mitigation measures. The project is subject to mitigation measures included in the MND as well as attached to the resolution in your pocket. These mitigation measures are standard for this type of development and include construction best management practices, nesting bird survey, measures if cultural resources are discovered, requirement to implement the recommendations of the geotechnical report, as well as implementation measures for the TDM plan. Next slide, the mitigation month, the negative declaration was available for public review and comment from May 14th through June 2nd, and we did receive one public comment expressing concern with construction-related impacts to the adjacent business. The commenter did not raise any CECL related issues that have not already been addressed in the document. Staff has added conditions to the approval certificate to address the comments raised by the member of the public, which is the long-term leaseholder of the building in front of the site. And that requires the developer to attend a pre-construction meeting with building and planning staff prior to the start of any construction on site, as well as coordinate with the adjacent business owner for any work or deliveries that may impact their use of the East Midland area. And finally, with neighborhood outreach and public notice, the applicant mailed information on the project to property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the site. They held meetings with the Greater East Side community members, as well as spoke with representatives of Medallik, Medallik Dance Studio, I'm pronouncing that wrong. The public notice of this meeting was mailed to all property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the site on June 8th and published in the newspaper on June 10th. Staff has not received any additional comments on the project as of this evening. And finally, we have the motion. Should you be prepared to make that this evening? I also have our CECL consultant Rebecca Ald of Lakeview Gregory here this evening if you have any CECL-related questions, and the applicant would like to give a brief presentation as well. And that concludes staff presentation. You can either answer any questions or you can turn it over to the applicant. Thank you.
All right, Lisa, thank you very much. That was a very good presentation, very thorough. Do any commissioners have any clarifying questions of Lisa before we ask the applicant to make their presentation?
And at this time.
I have a quick question of Lisa.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Lisa, thanks for the presentation, and I appreciate the clarity of the findings and the conformity to make. Can you clarify the landscape plan includes five trees plus 42 around the perimeter, and that 41 are required based on the proposed number of parking spaces? So that is based on the city's standard, and so what is the city's standard? And, you know, I asked because the rendering seemed devoid of trees, and we know how important trees are for our health. So, and yet it seems like it is meeting the city's requirements. So what is the city's requirement, and how is that derived?
Sure, so I'm sorry, I don't have that city requirement off the tip of my fingers. Maybe Lisa, of course, can help me with that, or I'll look it up in just a moment. But we do want to see some shade trees within the parking area to provide some relief. So there is a ratio in the code of how many trees that are required in the open parking areas. There were some challenges, though, with the site and the placement of the trees when we reviewed it with the fire marshal. So the fire department wants to have, I believe it's a 26-foot wide fire road all the way around the building so that they have the ability to access the building, as well as a 75-degree climbing angle for their ladder trucks at a distance of 15 to 30 feet away from the building. Then they want to make sure that there's no trees conflicting with the ability for the fire engine to be able to go around the site, as well as the engine ability to access the rooftop with the ladder. So that does limit our ability to put a lot of landscaping closer to the building, and it forced it to go out a bit into the parking lot and even around the perimeter of the site. So I think that's what you noticed on the site plan, is those trees are pushed away to make sure that there's some clear fire access, and then I'll be able to get back to the other part of your question later.
And through the chair, I can answer Commissioner Clements' comment question about the treaty standard. So this is bound in section 1818070 of the San Carlos Municipal Code under trees. And the requirement for projects in the industrial district is that there needs to be one tree for every 5,000 square feet of lot coverage. So that's how the standard is written.
Okay. Thanks. I had another question, which is the amount of paving around the property, was there any effort to do permeable paving? And then just third, the route of walking to Caltrain 12 minutes is great, very walkable, and just wondered what that walk path looked like and how tree-lined or shady that is, and, you know, kind of how easy that is to walk as well.
Sure, so the applicant can can clarify afterwards, but essentially that they're taking over that site that was already developed by the Honda dealership and not replacing any of the paving, except where they're reconfiguring the parking a bit and some of the tree wells are shifting a bit. I don't know the ability to have permeable paving with the site contaminations. That's an interesting question. And as well, the fire department does have a lot of concerns about permeable paving to making sure it meets their load-bearing access requirements. So there could be opportunities in other portions of the site, just not where the fire access would be. And then, Lisa, of course, if you want to go back to the map that was after the TDM plan I had just from Google, I just looked at what kind of that fastest route might be, and, you know, somebody could certainly cut across. But at the moment, it looks like it's coming up one of the residential streets, and so yes, that would be with a sidewalk and tree-lined would be kind of the most direct route. Industrial Road does have sidewalks, but at the moment, maybe not very tree-lined. I think we're looking with the East Side Plan recommendations to improve that walkability.
Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have, Chair. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had one comment, and Commissioner Clements got to the issue of trees. 41 trees were required and 42 trees are being proposed. I was hoping for more trees, and Lisa, it sounds like the fire department has some regulations and that necessitated the because when I looked at the at the one rendering that showed some trees, they looked really spaced apart, and I thought, oh, we could fit in more trees. And it sounds like we actually can't fit in more trees because of these fire codes. Can you clarify that?
Well, it's really around the fire access route, so it just takes you around the perimeter of the building, and then also, you know, it's going to be that flag access driveway. And then between that access road and the building, it's difficult to have any large trees because they're going to grow and they're going to block the fire access. But in the parking area and around the perimeter, there would be an opportunity, and we can have the applicant maybe discuss if there's an opportunity to add additional trees to the landscape plan.
All right, thank you. Any other questions before we ask the applicant to come forward? All right, the applicant, please come forward and with your team, and we're looking forward to your presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Cyrus Sanandaji. Thank you so much for having us here, and I'd like to start it off by thanking staff, particularly Ms. Sanders and our consultant Ms. Ald as well for just being fantastically cooperative and really helpful in in this entire planning process. We're grateful to be here today. We prepared a very short presentation, being cognizant of your time, and I'll plan to touch on some of the questions or highlight highlight some of the responses to to your questions as we go through this. Lisa, if you don't mind, I'll try to get through these slides as quickly as possible here. We're a barrier-based development firm and have been here for and in operation for a little over 10 years. This is our first project in San Carlos, but we are very excited to continue to expand our roots in San Carlos and particularly continue with with future projects. It's, as I said, it's been a great experience so far in working with the city through this process to date, and we look forward to being able to hopefully secure your approval for the project and move forward with construction. I apologize, I don't believe I'm controlling the the screen here.
Yeah, you can just tell me next slide and I'd.
Oh, sure, we can skip to slide three if you don't mind.
Okay. So it's good.
So from, that's perfect, thank you. From the onset, we'd set out project objectives primarily with a focus on achieving a win-win with the city and to demonstrate our long-term commitment to the community. We pursued an adaptive reuse project as opposed to new construction with the focus on minimizing environmental impact and really maximizing what had just been built there and delivered not more than three years prior to us acquiring the property. We understood the priorities that the city and planning staff have for the area in terms of setting high-quality design and furthering the overall East Side Innovation District. And of course, part of our goal with the adaptive reuse of the building was to ensure that after the Honda dealership left and the family and the business, the owners of the business who actually developed the building are in the process of selling their franchise or dealership, which would then relocate the business, that we wouldn't end up with a vacant property or building at the property. Lisa, if we could go to the next slide. We've touched on the fact that this is within the existing and burgeoning life science cluster. If we can go to the next slide. As it relates specifically to our project, we covered to the odd panhandle-shaped configuration of the site itself. I would add that we have, and touching on the the comment about trees, we have sought to maximize the placement of trees within the constraints that were provided to us by fire. This is our latest landscaping plan, and we, to the extent possible, have continued what exists in terms of trees along Industrial and front of the Malatoc remedy or studio and have tried to maximize to take advantage of the parking lot that's immediately on Industrial that wouldn't have fire restrictions. So you can see on the bottom right of the screen there that that's really where we've concentrated a lot of the a lot of landscaping in terms of larger format trees. We do still have trees along the building itself, but given the constraints within the fire lane, have had to maintain certain species that are shorter in height and narrower in canopy. And in fact, those larger format trees that you see providing shade through the parking area, the surface parking area, were actually twofold. So they were actually further in covering the drive aisle sort of plan east, and that's what we had to keep clear to to provide this unobstructed fire lane, fire access. So the intention originally was to actually have that be a double canopy, if you will, along those islands. And unfortunately, we weren't, we weren't able to accomplish that. So we've maximized sort of the site landscaping, and though we're limited in terms of the number of large format trees with tall canopy, you know, wide canopies, it will be a lush site that we hope will accomplish the goals that that commissioners had raised in your questions around landscaping and trying to mitigate some of that heat and effect and so on. If we can go to the next slide, please. By point of comparison, we actually have 47 trees compared to the 24, though our footprint is essentially the same as the existing building. We're squaring off the existing footprint and adding a full floor to the project within the height limit with the exceptions that Ms. Sanders had highlighted. But we're close to doubling the number of trees. Again, we'd hoped to be able to provide more, but ran into those limitations there. We're also providing extensive bike parking facilities, locker rooms and showers, again, all part of our TDM measures, 20 carpool and van pool spaces, EV charging, and also the motorcycle parking spots, all of which we hope will help enhance the optionality of commuting and transit to and from the building. And in fact, as a building, we're also going to be providing e-bikes as a building amenity so that our tenants during lunchtime and so on can actually take those, even if they don't have a bike or don't have bikes at their workplace, can just grab a bike and ride downtown, again, to try to help mitigate and minimize. Uh, again, to try to help mitigate and, and minimize um, the congestion. Uh, in fact, our traffic, the, the city's traffic engineers, our transportation study, uh, demonstrated that with all of that, uh, the proposed building, despite its size increase, actually decreases peak hours and won't change prior to the dealership that's in place, which is a rather heavy and impacting, uh, impactful use. If we can go to the next page, please. We, a- as a firm, are really committed to ensuring that we're a long-term member of the community and look to ensure that as part of any planning process, we're uh, listening to and, and trying to address as much of the concerns that may be directly related to our project, but also may have broader implications to the neighborhood, uh, unrelated to our project, at least directly. Uh, this is just some of the broader categories of, of items of discussion that we'd had with, with various neighbors and members of the community and some of our responses as well. I, there is some question and concern around light pollution, particularly given the proximity to the residential housing. Uh, we have in accordance, obviously with, to the LEED standards and Cal Green and so on, will have light sensors and motion sensors all the way throughout. Uh, there won't be any light pollution and, and that any of the site lighting is going to be concentrated and directed strictly to the minimum levels of candles required for code compliance, uh, and focused on the pedestrian areas uh, of circulation on the site. In terms of landscaping and, and the pedestrian views, there's a slide here that, that uh, is just a before and, and propose uh, that we'll highlight, but we really sought to enhance the parking, surface parking lot on industrial, which is really the only frontage on industrial that we control to significantly sort of um, landscape and, and essentially obscure the view of our building. The, uh, there was a request that left turns on industrial, uh, it could pose potential risks in terms of pedestrian safety. Uh, we committed to increasing and ensuring that there's plentiful signage on our property at the exits, um, to uh, warn against sort of making sure that people don't cross those mediums um, and, and are aware of pedestrian uh, traffic. We uh, fielded a question regarding freeway noise, which I'm sure comes up with every project. Uh, and certainly the, the request was that we increased our landscaping and that's how we came up with the uh, additional sort of forty-eight. We, we tried to make sure that the trees that we specified, that our landscape architects specified were eventually at full maturity, were rather dense trees that could help in whatever way that, that trees can help muffle or mitigate noise. There's, I'm sure, as the Commission has heard, concerns in the neighborhood about cut-through traffic and shuttles, particularly from these projects on industrial. We won't be providing a shuttle, uh, at, at our project. Our project is of a size that, that we don't believe that, uh, tenants will um, themselves operate these either, but nonetheless, we are not operating one, uh, as a matter of practice for the building, which we do understand some of the other projects will be. We've instead heavily focused on our mass transit, uh, options and, and how to provide more connectivity uh, for our site and the e-bikes as well, an example of that. In terms of the construction impact itself, it was touched upon that we've had correspondence and, and met with the owner of the dance studio onsite. There had been concern, uh, and candidly impact during the course of construction initially, uh, of the premale Honda dealership, uh, prior to our ownership. And we understood that that had a significant impact on the safety of the children who were being dropped off and picked up at the school and we're very sensitive to that. Um, we have, in fact, developed a, a pretty extensive site logistics plan for construction that we shared with um, the owner of the dance studio, uh, and had committed to ongoing coordination uh, as Ms. Sanders had, had touched on, uh, during the course of construction, in fact, appointing uh, a project manager from both the general contracting firm and from our company, who will be coordinating with the dance studio on, on a regular basis and making sure that they're apprised of, of any of the activity. Further that, and again, we're unsure of the circumstance around this, but our site and the seven-six-seven site, which is the, the property in which the dance studio is located, uh, depend on reciprocal easements, uh, for ingress and egress. Uh, and so, uh, there is no intention on, on impacting or shutting down either of those because both sites, again, are dependent on those. And, and we understand that there may have been some closure, uh, during the construction of the, of the premale Honda sites. That was really the, the extent of the, the the concern, uh, and the, and the communication. We had also had a discussion around the existing remediation efforts, uh, at, uh, that Praxair is responsible for. Um, and, and provided an update with respect to the, to the status of the same. That is ongoing and uh, from Aptin, which is the consultant that's overseeing the remediation from their reports, uh, it is progressing very positively and, and the remediation is, is, is working, uh, which is great news. If we can go to the next slide, please. This was just a highlight of the site logistics plan for, for construction, which shows that we would be staging and, and handling all of our materials and storage and so on within our property and, and away from the easements, uh, and the access. If we can go to the next slide, please. And, and these are some views of the current building, just for context, and some folks may not have had the ability to drive around the site. So Lisa, if you don't mind, we can just go through these. Um, it, it just shows some views generally showing angles. We can keep going. This is the, the site pointing, uh, looking northbound. This is now southbound. And this is the current view. I think it's worth noting this. And if we can go to the next slide, that's sort of the enhanced landscaping that we're proposing. Again, just to obscure the, the building. I, I would note that the building on the right in the rendering was our assumption or estimation of what the eight-eight-eight Branson project would look like. Uh, it, it may not be a hundred percent accurate. We just wanted to show that really the view of our project is obscured from, from industrial road. Uh, and just some highlights in terms of our, uh, ongoing commitment to, to the community with, uh, our members of the, of the chamber. Presidio Bay just as a firm has a longstanding commitment to education efforts. Uh, we have an ongoing real estate scholarship program that we're actually running every summer. This is the inaugural year of us doing it formally, but um, uh, we plan to continue to do that. Uh, we are um, also building out extensive sort of childcare in, in several of our facilities and projects. Uh, and then similarly as well, are actually not just commercial developers, but do quite a lot of uh, housing and multifamily development and have been speaking with um, Al and Lisa about opportunities and, and how we can explore, uh, housing production and residential development in San Carlos as well, just knowing that on the one hand, while we build commercial, it's also important to provide housing for those that, that are seeking jobs there and, and help to address our, our housing shortage, uh, at the moment, which is affecting really every jurisdiction statewide. So with that, uh, I just wanted to thank the Commission for your, for your time. And Lisa, I think we can go to the next slide and, and hold it there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanandaji. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
You did. Thank you so much for your time. And, and we're available for any questions. My, my colleague Sandra is here as well, who's the architect who can speak to any of the more technical questions.
Well, thank you. One comment before I ask my, uh, fellow Commissioners if they have any questions of you before we or your architect before we hear from the public. I was pleased to, uh, be refreshed with the rendering with all the trees that you'll be planting out on the side, out on the front by industrial, by that parking area. I drove down industrial today past the new Meridian complex that is just finishing up. And of course, they are fully landscaped. And for the first time, I saw two people jogging on that new sidewalk right by the building and one person walking a dog. So it, it was just really pleasant to see that. And if they were to continue on down the street, they would run into, um, run past the, uh, new trees that you'll be planting in that, in that new parking lot. So I was really pleased to see that rendering. Thank you. Uh, do any of my colleagues have any questions of the applicant or the architect before we hear from the public?
I have, I have a few.
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Roof, and then we'll go to Commissioner Bradley.
I have a, I have a number of them. So I'll ask a, a couple of them and then I'll, um, I'll let the others ask and then I may have some at the end as well. But, um, I appreciate the very clear presentation and it looks like a beautiful, uh, building and the trees look, um, look like an improvement over what's there now. So, um, so that's all really good looking. I'm, uh, wanted to get a few more thoughts from you about your long-term commitment to the community that you mentioned. Uh, how that, um, would actually, uh, come about, uh, in, in that there's big plans for the east side, uh, district, uh, some of which involve green corridors and things that I guess this building kind of falls under the threshold for needing to be part of the development plan. But in what ways is the, do you see this development contributing a little bit more broadly outside the building itself, uh, to the, um, to the, uh, community?
Commissioner Roof, I, I apologize. My computer, of course, crashed as soon as you asked your question. Do you mind just repeating? I, I just logged back in. I heard your
Okay.
End of the question, which said community.
Yes, um, so, well, first I congratulate you on a very nice looking building and, uh, like the trees. Uh, but, uh, then, um, I would, wanted to hear a little bit more from you about the, about the long-term commitment to community that you mentioned in terms of how that would actually be manifest. Because this building doesn't seem to be part of a, a larger, um, uh, development, um, project in, in the east side where there'll be green corridors or other infrastructure in the larger area. So what, um, what, what do you mean by long-term commitment to community?
I, I'm, I'm speaking about Presidio Bay as a firm and, and generally our commitment. So we uh, have been involved in, in all of the jurisdictions that we've started projects and uh, we don't just do one project. And in fact, we're, we're speaking actively at the moment during contract to acquire uh, a, a larger site in San Carlos and, and are speaking with planning staff at the moment, talking about that project, uh, as part of that and our commitment to San Carlos and, and doing multiple projects there. Um, we are in active discussions with, uh, the Parks and Rec Foundation and the Education Foundation, uh, the Chamber and, um, other, uh, community groups and, and trying to get involved with initiatives that more directly benefit the community, uh, in San Carlos, uh, and specifically looking not just in monetary, but, but specifically sort of our involvement and active participation in, in these various, um, groups and, and, and areas. And so that, that's really what I mean by, uh, our commitment to, to San Carlos.
Okay. I, I noticed that you mentioned the affordable housing support and a, a figure there of two million dollars. Is that part of a, a formal agreement? Are you, um, obligated to, um, follow through on that or is that a conceptual?
Yeah. Sanders can speak to that on the technical side, but that, that's part of the impact fee that would be levied against the project. So there it's not an optional, uh, contribution. It's, it's part of the part of the, the permitting and approval process.
I see. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you for making that clear. I mean, you rightfully should get credit for, for, um, for that's a good chunk of money, but, um, wanted to make sure it was formalized. The remediation, I was happy to hear that it sounds like it's working, but what, what would happen if it wasn't working? I mean, if, I mean, it's nice that they're doing testing, but, um, I'm just curious how the, the remediation and the pollution there could potentially impact the, um, the community. I mean, is it possible trouble could ensue?
Well, so, uh, a couple of things. And Lisa, do you mind pulling up maybe the last slide of our, I, I prepared just a, a single page on the current status of the remediation that came from Aptin, which is the, the consultant. But as a matter and then just understanding Praxair, uh, which had formerly occupied the site is the responsible party from a chain of title standpoint and, and not speaking from a legal perspective, but, uh, legally speaking, the, the county holds them accountable, the state holds them accountable. They have an obligation to satisfy remediation and to remove any elevated levels of, of toxins that otherwise would prove or, or oppose any danger to the community. Uh, and so the approach that they've taken is ISAB is, is what they call this, in situ anaerobic bio remediation, which is sort of injecting, um, enzymes into these wells, uh, and into the ground in order to then resolve any of the pollutants that are in the groundwater. Uh, so just in terms of as we understand it, again, and we're not involved in remediation, um, to be clear, Praxair continues to be the responsible party. Aptin is their third party. They're following a procedure that's approved by the, by the county health officials. But, uh, i- if the ISAB wouldn't show positive results, they would be forced to pursue alternative means to remediation. Uh, but they are obligated to remediate the groundwater contamination that they've caused essentially. That, that's a pretty short answer.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll be quiet now in case somebody, another Commissioner has a question for you. And then I have one or two little ones at the end.
No problem. And Commissioner Roof, I would just add, just in terms of remediation and the, the rate at which, uh, the remediation is occurring and, and what there is proving. Uh, it's interesting to note that they actually anticipate that their bio remediation will likely be completed. At least they, they go back for their next monitoring September of 2021. So they feel pretty optimistic that, that it has shown extremely positive results and that could be done in relative short.
Oh, that's interesting. But you'll proceed with a plan that enables the monitoring wells indefinitely?
We have no choice but to, because there, there is no proof that necessarily this, that, that could just be them being overly optimistic, I would say. We, we have no choice and we cannot get in the way of the monitoring wells or their ability to, because it, it, it could be that the sampling they took was, was positive and so on, or, you know, and so on. So we have to maintain total access and flexibility for them.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Roof. When we will, uh, not forget and loop back with you, uh, when we, after we've heard from everyone once. Commissioner Bradley, you had a few questions?
Yes, uh, just one now, but I'd like first to give a favorable comment to the architects and designers of your project. Uh, you've taken a rather massive, uh, unattractive building, frankly, uh, uh, concrete slab structure and provided us with a facade of light and clean, uh, materials. Uh, and I, I congratulate you on that. Being able to do that, pull it off is not easy. Um, my question is, do you have any idea of how many jobs you will be creating approximately?
We do, and thank you so mu- thank you so much for that. The team has worked extremely tirelessly and uh, it's been a fantastic team again in collaboration with the, with, with the city, with, with Al and Lisa and their entire team. So thank you for that comment. Uh, we anticipate that the job, uh, creation would be somewhere in the five to six hundred, um, job range. Uh, just given the, the anticipated use for, for life signs, uh, type tenants.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Clements, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I also wanted to, um, express some delight that the, that a building, um, such as this, that's so, um, permanently visible. that a building such as this, that's so um, permanently visible um, in the community can be reused, not just reused, but repurposed and made much more attractive and it will not have to look at some empty car dealership for the next 10 plus years and wish that it were being torn down. So I'm very, very happy that this can be um, made into an attractive property. Um, just a couple of questions. I'm wondering if, could we go back to the renderings and see again what the view that we would have from the main kind of pedestrian connections? Wanted to see how the building faces the street and I was having a hard time finding that again in the packet.
I think the best view would be the industrial, the, the rendering Lisa that we had in, in our presentation was probably the one with the trees.
Oh, the one with the three trees and the higher rolling to the right?
That's really the, the, the pedestrian vehicular and bicycle sort of perspective or, or view of the project, just given if you recall from uh, one of the earlier slides, the panhandle shape of the site, it's really essentially straddling the freeway.
Right. And so it's set back and not directly visible. And then the entrance is then which side of the building is it?
Very, yeah.
Close side of the building?
That's our property, uh, and entrance for the monument sign is, which is currently
Shared easement, got it?
Uh, no, and the, the shared easement is actually on the, on the northern side. So
Oh, okay.
It's on the northern side of the Melonic Remedy building. Lisa, do you mind going one slide back? Perfect. So the current Honda monument sign, that location would state that that marks the entrance to the
I see.
To the property. And then if, Lisa, if you don't mind going to maybe slide four. I was just gonna pull up the landscape plan to point out, or that, sure.
Oh, yeah.
Um, you can see where the arrows are. So that's the, that's our property.
I see it.
And then the easement is actually on the northern side, that gray, yeah. And so both, so in essence,
I see.
The tenants of Melonic Remedy and ours would, would use, exactly, would use what Lisa just highlighted.
Okay. And the music, the dance studio is right to the left of the red dotted line is this?
It's that building, exactly. That's right.
Thank you for clarifying that. Good. You know, one of the challenges, I think, in industrial buildings is trying to make trying to balance the needs of the buildings, which often have surface parking and kind of like, you know, a center building with parking around, it's kind of a large structure. Um, with something that hopefully is a little bit more fine-grained that people want to walk near and want to be close to. And um, you certainly hit the mark on the attractiveness. And it's too bad it's really hidden from the street and that, you know, it's more of a highway view, which is, which is all good. But um, but um, at some point perhaps those front parcels will also be redeveloped, but hopefully we'll get more review of your pretty building when that happens. Um, I wanted to also commend your use of parking stackers and making the most of the space that you have. And um, I'm excited to see the TDM program resulting in decreased parking spaces. And you, you know, providing additional ways to get to Caltrain and trying to use the assets that we've got, even though you've situated so well close to the highway. So that's, that's great news, I think. When you um, mentioned that you did include childcare spaces in some of your buildings, I was wondering whether that was a consideration for this building? And um, and whether you considered that and whether that did not work out?
Uh, candidly, not for this building, but for the new project that we're exploring, that, that is certainly uh, an amenity that we're exploring and partly because we are limiting any occupancy on the ground, on the, on the surface level, on, on grade due to the wells and the remediation.
Oh.
We, just given the fact that there is active remediation at the site, we don't want to encourage necessarily um, that type of use. And so our other project that we're working on, uh, that we've just started is, is more appropriately sort of positioned for that.
Thanks. Um, two more comments, then I'll hand it back off to my other commissioners. Um, one, you named different organizations in the community that you were talking to. I wanted to suggest that um, you know, the ability to use office space or meeting space for the community, I think is going to be in high demand for some of our nonprofits as they go through a difficult period with giving and have had to consolidate operations. And um, full disclosure, I'm on the uh, the Community Foundation Board of San Carlos and um, also another avenue for you to talk about these kinds of issues with. But I know that that has been brought up on other projects as um, you know, the access for the community to some meeting spaces and some, you know, ability for nonprofits to potentially share or access cubes and office spaces. So I just wanted to run that by you and see if you're open to that. Not that I don't think the city can require that. It's your, you know, there's no development agreement involved. I, I, I just wanted to raise the possibility.
I, I think we would certainly be open, you know, as an example, the roof deck area uh, would be a great event space. So for example, hosting fundraisers. Uh, you know, for an evening cocktail hour or things like that. Now that we're sort of back in post, in a post-pandemic setting, um, we're certainly open to, to doing things like that. And that's exactly the type of thing that we're um, when we say we're actively committed to, to expanding our roots in, in a community, those are the types of things that we're, that we like doing.
That's a great idea. That's a nice rooftop. Potentially. Um, and then one more question, which is um, I saw one of the reports saying that no tenant had been identified yet. And um, your estimate of jobs, 500 to 600, um, wanted to just confirm that that's true, that no tenant has still been identified.
That's correct.
Okay. And then um, you know, just in terms of housing needs generated, I guess the commercial linkage fee takes care of the affordable housing obligation. But one of the things I'm always interested in is what, what are the pay levels of the jobs created? And then, you know, what are the, what's the housing need generated by the jobs created if they're net new? And so um, so yeah. But if it's life sciences or R and D, probably higher income or at least moderate for most of them.
That's right. And, and generally, I think what we found in the Bay Area, at least just given the cost of living and so on, is that the jobs are uh, commensurate with sort of the ability of the employees to then afford to, to live eh, within a um, acceptable sort of driving distance from, from these sites. And so really we're seeing this from Erlingame, you know, South City down, down San Carlos, down to Palo Alto even. Um, that a lot of the researchers, the scientists are, they're local. Um, and we're not seeing a lot of commuting across the bay, for example. Yeah, we, we can just go off of what we know to be the tenant profiles and, and generally what these types of life science companies do as a matter of practice, but, but obviously couldn't speak to, to the specifics there. So.
Right. Right, right. Um, and then if I may, Chair, may I ask staff one clarifying question?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Lisa or Lisa? Just wanted to understand better with an adaptive reuse like this, when you think about trip generation, how, i- is it the net new space that we're assessing and the TDM programs applied to? Um, you know, with the parking demand? Or is it the, is it the entire property that is assessed, you know, a certain number of trips? And um, and thinking about it that way because it is a change in use. How does that work here?
Right. So the transportation demand management plan is, is to address the 20% reduction on the trips generated by this use, not just the net new trips. Um, some fees, like the transportation impact fee is based on net new trips. But um, what you said is correct. The TDM plan addresses the total project trips for this use, and it is a change in land use as well as in addition to a building. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, Mr. Sanandaji, uh, one comment and, and three questions. I, the comment is I will echo my colleague's comment that it comments that the building is extremely attractive. Uh, the design is, is, is really outstanding and I really commend you on the glazed glass. Um, I think I'll echo a couple of people's comments is, is going to be so much better than the concrete. And more sort of granular, I appreciate that you're able to reuse all of the good utility work that was done not so long ago when the Honda dealership was built. Um, as well as the, I think it's the first floor slab you're keeping and the second floor slab you're keeping. So a lot less noise, a lot less uh, disruption, a lot less dust by being able to reuse those um, those two slabs. My first question relates to the solar panels. There's solar panels on the Honda dealership now, but you're going to be removing the roof, adding another floor. And then what happens? You're gonna re-add the, the, the solar panels back on to that roof? Can you tell me how that works?
Absolutely. And thank you so much for your, your comments as well regarding the, the design. Uh, our goal is to decommission the building in its entirety and specifically as it relates to the solar panels to avoid demolition at all costs. And so we, from the solar panels, the TV panels, the ERX system, for example, the EV chargers that are, that are there. Uh, it, to the extent that any and all of that equipment can be decommissioned, uh, removed from the building, stored safely onsite, we plan to then reinstall all of them. So and in fact, in, in our renderings, um, Lisa, perhaps you can show maybe one or, or two. There's a, there's a couple more bird's eye type views there. Uh, we pointed out, um, or, or, or we've rendered uh, all the space that's not otherwise occupiable, deck space or mechanical space. That was actually a great one. Thank you. Um, you can see sort of the central area is, is um, mechanical equipment and we centralized it to adhere to the one-for-one sort of ratio, the setback ratio that, that Ms. Sanders had touched on. But everywhere else other than the occupiable roof deck is, is going to have those solar panels reinstalled. And while we have or because we have more uh, roof area, we can actually accommodate the, the solar panels that are all there despite these additions.
That's good to hear. So you'll be able to accommodate the roof uh, recreational area with the, still the same quota of solar panels that were there and that you still need?
And the, the additional mechanical infrastructure as well.
All right. That's very helpful and good to hear. Thank you. My second question, I wanted to learn a little bit more about these stackers. This is the first project I've been on, I think, where there's been stackers used in a commercial situation like this. In reading through the packet, it said that the stackers would be somewhere between three and five levels. Um, the, the, you know, TBD for the future. I'm wondering if you've decided a little more firmly how many levels it is. And I, I couldn't quite figure out how, how many levels were going to be below grade. Can you help me just understand a little bit more about these stackers?
I, I absolutely. They say a picture paints a thousand words and I'm remiss for not including a picture, but I will try to describe uh, what the, the shuffler or puzzler system looks like. Uh, there's no below grade excavation. So uh, it's actually on grade. And picture driving into your garage at, at home. It has a, a roll-up gate uh, or, or garage door. Uh, you, you drive in and rather when you drive into this, and, and there's really only two or three dedicated spots that you would drive into. And everyone drives into the same ones. And almost like a, a game of Tetris, y- y- what you're driving up onto is a platform that is sitting on small wheels. Uh, and it's tied to uh, a system that, that has pulleys and, and essentially rails uh, and, and tracks. And so you would pull in, you would park your car uh, and you would leave. And that is your dedicated stall that you will always park in. Uh, meaning that's the same gate you always drive in and out of. It's the same platform your car is always going to be on. And they're dedicated. The puzzler system that the, the actual parking stacker will then slide your car into the back or up the stack. Um, and I believe we're actually doing these, the three car stacks, sort of three in height. Uh, but there's gaps a- a- again at the floor to allow for this puzzler to move the cars forward and back in a tandem scenario and then sideways and up and down. But in essence, if, if you think of it, and I really wish that I had a, a photograph here. Um, it's essentially a, a three-level robot that you drive in and out of the same spot. So if you were to leave work, uh, you would hit the clicker. And within a matter of a minute or a minute and a half, uh, no matter where your car is within the stacker, it will deliver your car to you at grade. And then the roll, the, the gate would pull up and you would walk in and get into your car and then pull out just as you would in your home.
That's very helpful. Yeah, the commission has, has reviewed these in the past with multi-unit residential development and, and we're generally familiar with it. And but I appreciate your extra detail. One of the things that we had in a couple of the residential developments was, and some of the more recent ones, was the ability to put an EV charger in the stacker. Um, which at first I didn't understand how it worked, but many people have explained this. And I'm curious um, if you are anticipating doing something similar.
Uh, w- we are. And in fact, these units are self-contained. So structurally, they, they have their own power, uh, and their own sprinkler systems, their own fire suppression. Uh, and each of those platforms that I described are EV-ready. Uh, and so you can put your dedicated charger, again, because your vehicle stays on your platform, then we can put the charger there and you can connect your vehicle to, to the charger. Uh, and your vehicle stays with the platform and in charge of no matter where in the shuffler it gets moved to. Or where, where the puzzler gets moved to.
Very helpful. Th- thank you for that explanation. And my last question relates to parking. Based on the square footage, um, 229 parking spaces are required. And with the transportation demand management plan that requires a 20% reduction, that brings us down to 183 spaces that are required. Your project is proposing 198 spaces. I'm curious, why so many? With all of your focus on mass transit and us being only a half a mile, you being only a half a mile from the train station, I'm I, I'm hopeful that there's a lot of people taking transit and I'm hoping that you don't need all the parking spaces, but I'm curious as to why you put in so many more than you needed to.
And we, we're hopeful of the same. Uh, and we truly do believe that long-term we're going to be in a situation where we're, we're moving away from vehicles. We do think that nonetheless, particularly within the context of where we are today and what the pandemic highlighted, that as much as we want mass transit and public transit to be utilized, it, it's certainly um, not something that, that ridership, for example, is just not where it was a year and a half ago as an example. Um, so part of the reason we pursued the stackers is that it's modular and we're able to remove them long-term. We're not wasting a, a lot of space i- in that sense. We needed to mitigate just knowing where the market is currently. Uh, so that we, it, it's, it's the viability and leaseability issue. Um, but we're hopeful that we won't actually need the spaces. And that's part of the flexibility of the, uh, eventually long-term of being able to decommission and relocate the stackers elsewhere, for example, to a different project.
Thank you. Very helpful response. Commissioner Roof, I'm gonna loop back to you and then I'll, I'll check in with my other colleagues and see if there's a second round of questions from anyone else.
Okay, great. My, my question actually follows nicely um, from, from that one on the uh, on the parking, the uh, TDM plan, I was pleased to see that you used conservative estimates for the number of um, of employees per square foot for office space um, and for, for lab space. Um, so hopefully the TDM plan in terms of the um, In terms of the amount of trips required by the building. But as you were alluding, there's some uncertainty about that. So I saw that there's a five-year review of the TDM plan. Is that a, is that five years, something that's mandated by the, by the law or the code? Or is that, is that something that's built into the, this proposal? If that's a question for the applicant or for the city staff.
I would, I would be happy to answer that. We've placed it in two, two areas for this project. So the city's municipal code does require the monitoring and specifically after the five years. As well, we've included it with the mitigation monitoring plan that's a part of the SECO document. Because we are relying on implementation of the TDM plan to comply with the new SECO requirements for vehicle miles traveled. So we need to show that we're reducing the trips and complying with vehicle miles traveled. So we've also included as a mitigation measure to make sure that there's ongoing monitoring. And that if they're not meeting that trip reduction, then they're going to have to come up with another plan, another implementing measure in order to do so. So we've got it in two places.
So that would be a five-year, it's sort of like a five-year run and then there's an opportunity to fix it if needed.
Yes.
Yeah, five years seems pretty long, but I guess, but at least there is, there is an option to fix it. Is there a drop, a drop off for the applicant, a drop off zone or for car services or for, or if the shuttle were to come along there? Where, where would that sort of activity be conducted?
Commissioner Roof, if you see there's an ADA path by the sort of middle tree, middle large tree in the middle of the parking lot going to.
Oh, the crosshatched?
That's the crosshatched area. That area is essentially a passenger living and unloading zone. So the idea would be that we would. Through cooperation with the ride share services and so on, designate that as the passenger pickup and drop off area, right at the front door of the building.
I see, okay. Yes, so it's sort of a way to multipurpose that space with the fire department needs. And to, and also having to be a drop off zone. Okay. Good, I'm glad to see that that's there. I was happy to hear that you're providing the e-bikes. Because one thing with all these big buildings going up, it's nice if employees have an opportunity to zip over into town to, to go shopping or, or go to a restaurant during lunch. So the e-bike plan sounded, sounded really good. Was that part of the TDM? I mean, is that a mandated thing or is that a, a nice to have?
No, I, I, I don't believe so, but that's just something that we've always provided bicycles as part of our developments. And now that e-bikes have become a little bit more prevalent, given the distances we're talking about. It, it makes riding a bike a lot more accessible. To folks, even if you've got, you know, joint pain or other, you know, it, it allow, it's not necessarily a strenuous activity to drive down and go to the little, you know, downtown from the site. Just things do go relatively quickly too, but it's just something that we've been doing. There are other mandated requirements, like for example, a transit screen. And we're putting a very prominent one in the, in the lobby and integrating it into part of the public, part of the art that we're doing in, in, in the entry area and so on. But no, the e-bikes are just an example.
Yeah.
Something that we like to think to encourage sort of out of the box and thinking and to get our, to promote sort of different behaviors.
So you're committed to doing that?
That's exactly right, sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, great. The shuttles being excluded from building operation, I understand, I learned recently about the pros and cons of shuttles. And they're not as always as easy or as attractive as I originally thought. But if there were shuttle service, how would, how would that, how could employees at this building take advantage of that?
Well. I mentioned it within the context of the residential neighbors and the concern that certain shuttles that are privately operated. Have been taking the cut, have been cutting through the residential neighborhoods essentially to get to the Caltrain station.
Yeah.
And we reassured the neighbors, the residential neighbors that we weren't providing a private building operated shuttle. If a tenant, if a tenant were to. Have a shuttle program because they have multiple buildings, for example, within an area which is not uncommon. We haven't seen a lot of that in San Carlos, but not uncommon when you look at life science clusters. Part of what we committed to as well was to spell out in lease agreements. That they would be committing to taking a route that would not involve cutting through the residential neighborhoods. That it would in fact go around, so as to not create a pedestrian safety issue.
I see.
For the residents.
Okay, okay, good. So it would still be an option, it just has to be a, a workable, a workable setup.
Yeah, and maybe Commissioner Roof, if I can add on to that a bit. We are taking a look at shuttle system and, you know, different transportation options through the East Side Vision Study. We've got a traffic consultant that's taking a look at what that route might look like and where, where some stops might be. And given the size of this building, it may not warrant having its own shuttle, independent shuttle service. But it may be something that in the near future, we have a transportation management authority. That all of the property owners and business owners in the area can participate in and there's a more coordinated shuttle program. So for example, at 887 Industrial, the Meridian 25 property, there is a pullout in front of that site. That could accommodate a shuttle. And I know at 1091 Industrial, they had a pullout that I think the commission has to be widened to accommodate additional drop off cars that probably could also accommodate a shuttle. So we'll be looking at different areas where a shuttle might be able to stop and it's not going to stop at every business, that just wouldn't be efficient. And maybe that you walk a block or so to get to the shuttle.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I think that's important. I mean, it's, it's challenging with, with the proposals that come before the planning commission. The one-off projects. And then you start to think, well, when you start having a lot of these one-off projects, they could add up to create a problem, traffic jams or whatnot. But it sounds like there's some provisions potentially with the shuttle and the other things that we've been talking about to address that. The TDM plan would provide leverage, the review, if it's not working, we have some leverage on the, on the property owner to, to make it right, so.
Right, and Sam Tran's also working on their reimagine and looking at their routes and seeing if this would be a new route as well to, to provide a service there.
Okay, okay. That's all the questions I have at this time.
Any questions from any other commissioners of the applicant, the architect or staff before we hear from the public?
Bradley has one more question and I'll proceed it again with a favorable comment. I was delighted to see a relatively small sign. And I believe it doesn't face 101, which in my opinion always creates. Safety hazards and attraction of high-speed driving on the freeway when there's. Advertising or directional types of signs, buildings along 101 there. Question is, congratulations on that item. Question is, for his comments from Alyssa or developer next door or adjacent 767 properties. I believe it's a dance studio for young people. And the idea of increasing the width of the easement for access of both your building and theirs in the future. Is that, and then I, but they had some good ideas and I didn't see follow-up on. Follow-ups and the staff or. To the staff. To understand what I'm getting at, can you put a little light on that for me, please?
I'm happy to, sorry, I wasn't sure if that was directed at me, but. We're in contact with the master tenants or the, the team that mass releases the building. And I believe that Mr. Bear is actually on this call at the moment. But we're in communication and we haven't seen a specific proposal with respect to a proposed project. But we reiterated our commitment and shared that with staff as well, that we would be open to exploring. Ways to enhance the public realm and, and both projects. When such proposal is, is put forth and. Separately or, or speaking with, with their tenant, the dance studio. Whom we understand has three or four years left on their lease with respect to the construction specific coordination as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we see who is in the waiting room? All right, let's move now to public comment. Thank you, Mr. Sanandaji, I said it wrong, Sanandaji, for all those answers. And thank you to staff and we will now move to the public comment period. There are a couple of ways you can comment. You can use the raised hand feature on Zoom or you can press star nine on your phone. Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room?
Yes, there is.
All right, do you, can you say about how many people there are in the waiting room? I'm just trying to get an idea of time.
Yes, we currently have three.
All right. We'll let the first person in the waiting room, welcome, and you will have three minutes to make your comment. And please state your name for the record.
Yes, this is Debbie Baldocky and I speak for myself and my husband Gary Baldocky. We are San Carlos residents and we live farther than 300 feet away from this development. And we have one objection and then one question. The objection is to the parking variance. We object to the parking variance requested by the applicant on page 11, which would decrease the number of required parking spaces from 229 to 183. That's a net loss of 46 spaces. And although the applicant claims it will provide 198 spaces, that's still a net loss of 31 spaces. The planning department must make four findings before granting the variance. Despite the staff's recommendation to grant the variance, it does not appear to qualify for a variance because of finding C on page 11. The finding reads that it must quote, "not be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity. And will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, general welfare or inconvenience." There will be 600 jobs in this building and that only provides one-third of them with parking. There also will be over 7,500 new jobs in this area. And reducing the parking requirement could lead to increased street parking in neighboring areas, especially the single-family home area within 300 feet. Therefore, we respectfully request that you deny the variance. Because although the applicant will enact measures to encourage its employees to avoid parking onsite, those are voluntary only. And as he mentioned, people are taking public transit lists. The second is just a question. We question the finding that there will be no long-term air quality impacts due to operational emissions and odor. We basically request additional information about the number of exhaust stacks. The height of the exhaust stacks, the velocity of the exhaust stacks. And the possible negative impact on air quality closer than 300 feet from the building. On pages 51 through 54, staff writes that there will be no hazardous emissions or odors from operation of the businesses. However, the applicant, the applicant concedes that some will be biotech or life science. Therefore, the presence of hazardous emissions cannot be known at this time. However, if you look at the plans, they show at least four exhaust stacks on the roof. And it's our understanding that they've been granted a height extension for the stacks.
Sanandaji, your time is up. If you could please wrap up.
Thank you. On page 55, I would just say that staff receptor say, staff says that receptors for hazardous emissions are located 300 feet away. And are dependent on the wind blowing from north to northwest.
Sanandaji, if you could please wrap up, your time is up.
We request that sensors be closed.
Sarah, next person in the waiting room, please, welcome and state your name. And you will have three minutes.
John Bear.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, hello, members of the planning commission, staff and Cyrus, it is nice to meet you via Zoom. I just have quick comments. So I'm with Jameis Development Partners. We do have the 99-year land lease on the 767 building. It is our intent and has been for over a decade to redevelop that project, that parcel, once the visioning is complete on the east side. So we have a long-term invested interest. In short, we enthusiastically support this adaptive reuse. It's a creative redevelopment and it's a compelling design. However, while we are highly supportive, we do have a concern that is narrowly focused. And first, I, I think for the record, it's very important to, to, to put on the record. That the 20-foot easement that runs a horseshoe around our parcel is actually a shared easement. That entire horseshoe is shared between the two buildings. So Cyrus, I just want to make sure you're aware of that because we would not be able to permit anything that obstructed that easement. Without our prior written approval. So I just want to make sure that's clear. The second is that shared 20-foot easement was created in 1950 and it never anticipated the massing or intensity of use. From the current 21st century life science proposal. Accordingly, we believe that the proposed circulation plan for 777, which is based on these antiquated 20-foot easements, is not adequate. To provide efficient and safe ingress and egress for the trimodal circulation of the 21st century, which includes autos, bikes and pedestrians. Specifically, I have participated in the East Side Visioning Plans and circulation is a very high priority throughout the Life Science District. Millions of dollars will be invested by both the city and developers to ensure efficient and safe trimodal circulation. My concern is that while the vision and investment will get trimodal circulation to the frontage of 777. The physical constraints of the existing 20-foot easement will make it virtually impossible for automobiles, bikes and pedestrians. In unison to get from industrial road to 777 building by way of this narrow entry easement. And for, for you all, the math is very simple. You need 22 feet for a two-way drive aisle. You need six feet for a bike lane and eight feet for a sidewalk. This constitutes 36 feet. They've only got 27 feet to work with. This means that somehow bikes, automobiles and pedestrians are either going to have to share a path of travel, which is not safe. We don't want pedestrian and bikes and cars in the same travel path. Or they're going to have to trespass and trespass would be likely on our land. So this raises a variety of concerns.
Mr. Bear, your time is up. If you could please wrap up.
I will, I will. So therefore, what I'm asking with full cooperation is that the PC asks the developer, Cyrus. To work cooperatively with us as the owners of 767 to look at a ingress and egress trimodal solution that is efficient and safe. And this design would likely.
Mr. Bear, if you could please wrap up, your time is up.
This design would likely require reconfiguration of the existing easements. And we will work cooperatively with the developer.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. All right, the next person in the waiting room, Sarah.
Caller ending in 853.
Good evening, please state your name. Good evening, please state your name, and you will have three minutes.
This is Rob Boynton, can you hear me there?
Yes, we can.
I am a property and business owner at 719 Industrial, and I have two questions. One is, in the parking, I tried to understand the very creative triple-deck parking, where he said, Cyrus said it would take about a minute to get the car into the parking place. But at the end of the day, or in the morning, when we have 500 people, and let's say that of the 500 people, 30% of them are driving, the other 60% would be taking transit. How do you get those people in there without backing up traffic onto industrial road? That's one of my questions. The other point of interest is, I have a 20,000-square-foot building at 719 with 20 people. This is going to be 500 people. And I'd like a little bit more development or explanation of how we're going to get 500 people in and out of this facility in a, in a timely fashion that doesn't interrupt the industrial road and commercial traffic of many small businesses that have deliveries going on at the same time that people would be entering and exiting a normal workday. So those are my two questions.
Thank you, Mr. Boynton. Sarah, is there anyone else in the waiting room?
No further comments.
All right. Lisa, does staff or the applicant want to respond at all to any of those new issues? The one I was thinking about was the, I was assuming that some of these hoods in the labs had filters before they were exhausted out the stack. Maybe you or Cyrus can comment on that. I thought that was a good question.
Yeah, if I could just briefly maybe address all of the comments that were provided. And then I would also appreciate our secret consultant is on the phone, Rebecca Ald. And so she can address some of the comments as well, and then we'll have the applicant fill in from there. So the first comment was relating to the variance. It is not a parking reduction for the variance. The variance is to exempt or not count some of the floor area that's currently used for covered parking. So I just wanted to clarify that the variance is not related to the number of parking spaces. I think the next comment was by Mr. Baer relating to the width of the driveway. So that also was taken a look at by our traffic consultant, and they found the width of the access to be adequate, given this use on the site. And not only would it serve the vehicles traveling, you know, for the tenants, but also some deliveries as well throughout the day, and that it would be adequate for multimodal access. And Rebecca Ald can expand on that. And then the trip, the traffic, and how quickly people can get onto the site and use of the stackers. This use would have less peak hour trips. So that's less in the morning and in the afternoon during heavy commute hours than the existing use does. What it does have, though, is more overall trips throughout the day. So this types of use generates more traffic throughout the day. It's spread out throughout the day, and it's not concentrated during those peak commute hours. And that's based on the evaluation by the traffic consultant. And then Rebecca, if you have anything else you want to add or reinforce, and then I can have the applicant expand on what happens with the exhaust system. Thank you.
Sure. So, yeah, the driveway is acceptable for multimodal as it is now. The ability to expand the driveway is pretty limited from the perspective of this project. If the adjacent property owner wanted to coordinate with them to expand those easements, that could be a possibility, and things can always get better. But it's considered acceptable, and it was not identified as a potential hazard by our traffic experts when they took a look at it. And as Lisa said, generally speaking, the number of trips are going to go down from what it was under the auto dealership. So again, that's not going to be a problem from the perspective of additional trips on industrial. It'll actually be less trips on industrial. I think that covers what we're talking about now. But if anything else comes up, feel free to toss it back to me again.
Thank you, Ms. Ald. Mr. Sanandaji, do you want to respond to some of the other more technical comments?
I'm happy to within my, within my layman capacity, if you will. But with respect to compliance for the ventilation, the exhausts, all the uses would have to go through appropriate jurisdictional review and approval, whether it's Bay Area Quality Management and so on. And there are very strict codes with respect to scrubbers. Commissioner Garvey, I think you asked whether or not the hoods, for example, would have appropriate ventilation and filtration before any exhausts ever reached outside the building. And that's exactly the case. That's industry standard. So we expect the building to be fully in compliance with all codes and all laws applicable, not just at the local, state, and federal levels.
Thank you for that, thank you for that response, very helpful. Let me loop back in with Sarah. Sarah, anyone else in the waiting room?
Not at this time.
Any other responses that the city or the applicant or the sequoque consultant want to make on any issues before I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I don't have any further comments.
All right. At this point, I think that I will entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So moved.
And I will second that. Lisa, roll call. Commissioner Clements?
Hi.
Commissioner Bradley?
Hi.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
Chair Garvey?
Yes.
All right, we've heard from staff, the applicant, and the public. I'll now, I'll now open up the meeting for discussion amongst commissioners. And I had, in looking at the packet, I have a suggestion for how we structure our discussion tonight. We have five areas to discuss, and I thought we might take them individually in the following order. I'll propose this, and then I'll ask you if you would like something, something different. We'll start with the Sequa mitigated neck deck. And then we'll move on from that to the variance, which, as you know, involves the floor area ratio. Following that, we'll look at the conditional use permit, which relates to the stairway and the setback and the height. Following that, we'll look at design review relating to the zoning ordinance and the general plan and overall design. And we'll finish up with the transportation demand management plan. I have the variance and the conditional use permit pretty early on in our discussion. If there's any changes in those areas, I think they will inform our design review discussion. So I wanted that to follow the variance and the conditional use permit. So let me just throw it out to my fellow commissioners. How does this order sound, and does this work for everybody? Yes, agree.
Good for me.
Okay.
I agree. So we'll, we'll sort of confirm agreement on each of these five areas before moving on to the next, is that-
Yes, thank you, yes, Vice Chair Roof.
That sounds great.
All right, let us start then with Sequa. The mitigated neg deck, the mitigated negative declaration. Any comments? And keeping in mind the basis, because the Honda dealership is so new, much of this neg deck was used from the Honda dealership with modifications as necessary for this, this new, for this new use. Any comments on Sequa? I had one question possibly for the Sequa consultant. I was looking for a traffic analysis in here, and I didn't see one. And then I read a little further in the packet, and there isn't a traffic analysis because there's more trips, there's less peak trips. Can you clarify why, again for me, why there isn't a traffic analysis in this document?
Sure, so there is a traffic analysis. It's just not a full LOS analysis. It's included as attachment B to the document. They took a look at the number of trips and compared to the trips that were occurring under the auto dealership and did find generally a reduction in the amount of trips. So San Carlos and in general jurisdictions require a full LOS analysis when there's a certain amount of traffic. Obviously, you don't need to do it for one car or two cars. Usually, that threshold is about 50 peak hour cars. So if you're adding 50 cars during the peak hour, you want to run the full traffic model, run it through the whole rigmarole, and see what's going to happen. In this case, they're not generating 50 net new trips. It's generally negative net new trips. So it's not necessary to run that full LOS analysis to be able to conclude that they wouldn't have, I'm going to use the word impact here, but a significant impact on the traffic. In addition, Sequa, from a state level, has moved away from that LOS format of analyzing traffic that way, and instead moved to looking at the vehicle miles traveled. It's a little more comprehensive of, we want to get people to drive less, and then we'll have less traffic impacts. And we don't need to look nitty-gritty at every intersection if we look at the big picture of how far is everybody driving and how much driving is occurring. So that VMT analysis is included in this transportation attachment. And due to the area being San Carlos that the project is in, there is generally a higher vehicle miles traveled in this area than in other areas in the region. So it would have a significant impact without any mitigation. And that's where the TDM plan, and specifically the mitigation that has been applied to strengthen the TDM requirements, has been put in place to make sure that the project would comply with the VMT threshold, so vehicle miles traveled.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I did notice that the, some of the mitigation measures in the negative declaration are duplicative in the transportation demand management plan.
That's correct. It's a little bit of a strengthening of the city's TDM requirements.
It is a construction project, and I did look at the construction management practices, and I found them to be very, very standard. I personally did not have any issues with the mitigated neg deck. I thought it, I thought it read well, and it was a sound document.
Yes, I also thought it looked quite adequate. And it's kind of a testament to, it's a smart approach that the developer is taking to repurpose the existing structure, and the scale is largely recirculated. So the, the impact is limited, and then, and there's some efficiencies, and then we don't have to repeat everything in terms of understanding the impact. So in terms of the environmental deformation, I don't have any concern. I will have some, some thoughts when we get to the TDM, but that's a little bit later.
Hearing nothing beyond that, I'll infer that we have general agreement amongst the commission on the Sequa document. I'm going to move on now to the variance. Recall, the variance is relating to the floor-to-area ratio and the preservation of the wells. There are, there are four findings here. I'm not going to go through each one individually. I, I think that's a little bit too cumbersome, so I'll open it up for general discussion on the variance topic.
Chair, if I could ask staff to pull back up the variance slide. I found slides very helpful, trying to scroll back and forth between a very, a very large packet. The slides help, thank you.
Well, I can give my thoughts on this, which is that the, because of those wells and the desire not to put the parking underground, they're stuck with, stuck with at-grade parking, and that makes it fall under the, the parking square footage to fall within the FAR. So, but it's sort of an exceptional circumstance formed by the, by the need to maintain those wells. And so the fact that the parking is included in the floor area ratio seems like something that is exceptional and is a pretty good reason to, to provide the variance. I think the point was made pretty well already that the, the variance isn't impacting the number of cars that would be, number of parking spots that would be needed, required, just that it's, whether they're, we make an exception to the floor area ratio rule with regards to parking. So maintaining the foundation and the existing structure is kind of an integral part of this project. And if they're going to do that, then I think we would have to, I think it makes sense, and it's a reasonable justification to provide the variance.
I would agree with that. When I looked at the drawing, I thought, I originally thought the wells would be all clustered in one corner. They're not, they're spread out over a fairly large area, and it's really tough to use that whole area. So I would be supportive of the variance.
Yeah, I concur that the wells seem to be distributed such that the parking is designed as best as could be on the site. And so the variance is necessary. And I think the four findings were made sufficiently. I have no comments or objections.
I'm hearing general agreement then on the variance. Any other comments before we move on to the conditional use permit? All right, let's move on to the conditional use permit. This relates to the stairway and the height. Given the 16 feet above 50, 50 feet for the elevator, the stairs should be set in, and they're not, they're on the face. So therefore, the setbacks are not met. The building itself is setback in compliance. It's, but the stairs are not setback, they are on, they are on the facade. Any comments on this?
Well, I could comment. I find the visible stairs to be an important design element in what is otherwise, you know, a fairly boxy building. And so its visibility enhances the, you know, the popping out of the stairs. And I, I find it to be an important design element. I have no problems with this, with this exception, and therefore the need for the CUP.
Commissioner Roof, Vice Chair Roof.
I, I agree, and it is a pretty big, not the right word, it's allowing the conditional use permit to have these stairs. Really, they're protruding instead of being recessed. So it's a pretty big impact on the overall height of the building, I'd have to say. But when you take it in the context of this building next to the other planned, existing and planned development in the area, which are much taller buildings, some of them, it's not like this is on El Camino Real or Laurel Street where an imposing structure would, would impact the, the- would would impact the the feel for the neighborhood. In this case, it seems compatible with the neighborhood. So even though it's a it's a big exception, it's to look at send. It does have the positive benefits that have already been stated about breaking up the facade and it looks, looks pretty nice. So I'm I'm good with the conditional use permit for the protruding stairs.
Nice. I agree with both my colleagues.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bradley Bradley, and I'll add my voice to that as well. I think I think the stairs, when you walk into the building are going to make for when you walk towards the building, make for a very dynamic and positive effect. I think it all looks rather grand when you when you have the stairway there and you're walking in. And that's an important first impression. So I architecturally and design wise, I can see why that decision was made and I think it's a good one.
I would also add that an additional amount of height in a building that borders Highway 101 is to me a 50 foot height limit here is too low. And I would also, for the record, support a five story building on El Camino Real any day of the week.
All right. Any other comments on the conditional use permit and the findings? All right, hearing none. I I'm hearing agreement amongst all the commissioners for the conditional use permit. Now we will move on to design review. There are five findings. These relate to the zoning ordinance and the compatibility with the general plan and the overall design and quality of materials. Any Scott, any discussion on the design review?
Well, this may be redundant, but I would state again that they made a of an unattractive building, a very attractive building with the choice of materials, the scale, massing, saving and using like plenty of solar panels, innovation of using the stack parking. And something that we haven't mentioned so far much is the attractive roof deck area.
I second. I I agree with that. Very well put, Commissioner Bradley.
I will tag on to that. Well, but that roof deck is going to have the best view and looks so neat. I I that was that's just a wonderful design feature. So yes, I will add my voice to that. Looks good.
Yeah, I concur. I want to go up there and and have a fundraiser already. So thanks for the offer. I do think also. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, being retired Air Force Reserve Officer, we like to look at planes taking off and landing. We'll be able to do that from this roof deck in our own San Carlos airport.
I'll also add just that having greenery on part of the roof is a good idea for the environment. The other design elements, not just the appearance of the building. I appreciate, you know, the use of the TDM. I know it's practically, it's a practical element in order to, you know, reduce the amount of surface parking that one would otherwise need in order to expand the amount of office space. But, you know, I I think it's an excellent trade off for the public benefit. And so I'm happy to see bike parking in there and e-bikes. And I'll look forward to, you know, kind of seeing more and considering how this integrates more with the east side visioning process and all the kinds of micro mobility options that are exciting, I think, for this area of the city.
I would agree with that. I look at that glazed glass and it's just so attractive and so much more attractive than concrete. I the quality of the building materials is outstanding and and the design is is very handsome. That's a very attractive building. A lot of thought has gone into the design and the materials that comes through, and I really appreciate that. Any other? Yes, go ahead.
Chair, I would just say I appreciate also the explanations about the about the trees and kind of the limiting factors to integrate additional greenery. So again, I I even more appreciate the fact that there is some greenery on the roof deck. Because as much as we can possibly do in an area that is, you know, next to a concrete highway and surrounded by surface parking, I think it's important. So thank you for trying to maximize them.
And to build on that, there was something that was said in the in the applicant's presentation regarding lighting and trying to keep sort of annoying lighting in the in the nighttime down. And I have really appreciated that these were downward. These lights were designed to be downward facing. Many of them are motion activated so that you don't have too much light coming off of the site at hours of the evening and night when you don't want it. And I appreciated that element in the design. Any other comments on design review and the five findings? Vice Chair Roof, I see your hand is up. Oh, you're on mute.
Actually, I was intending to lower my hand. Okay, I'm good with this. I'm good with this one. I'm all right. Looking forward to the TDM discussion, though.
All right. Hearing no further comment, I am taking agreement amongst commissioners on the design review questions. That brings us to the final area for discussion, which is the transportation demand management plan and the two findings that need to be made. Who would like to open up the discussion and Vice Chair Roof, is your hand back up now or would you like to wait?
I can start and I think the the plan seems pretty good and but there's a lot of uncertainty in how things are going to work out in terms of how many people are and they've done their best estimate at at what that will look like. But nevertheless, there is a lot of uncertainty. And also in the context of the overall development in the area, whether there's sort of compounding impacts that could lead to lead to traffic problems. And all three of the public comments that we received had some element of concern with the transportation impact. And our leverage as a city, once we say yes now, then they're good to go for five years and and there's no, you know, I'm sure there'll be good citizens and willing to talk, but we don't have sort of legal leverage to to extract concessions or or solutions necessarily until once we, once we sign off on it tonight, maybe. But but the there's there is this five year review on the TDM where where there's a new assessment done after the after five years. But five years seems like a long time. So what I'm going to toss out is and I'm not sure about the practicality, but would it be possible to require an earlier review? So that if there are problems, we have a way to address them in a shorter timeframe, say, three years?
Sounds reasonable to me.
And this is Greg Rubens. You know, that's a that type of condition is in your discretion to approve the TDM plan.
Yeah, and I I through the chair, I was going to suggest three years. So I appreciate Vice Chair's comment because you do need some amount of time for normal operations and people get used to new kind of travel habits. So I appreciate that timeline and also my thought was that it would be more most appropriate to include that in the mitigation monitoring plan. And then have the certificate circle back and then reference the language in the mitigation monitoring plan. So mitigation measure in your secret document, mitigation measure trans one, item number seven would be modified to reference the the three years and not the five years. And then in your condition of approval, condition number 43, would then reference consistency with that mitigation measure, the trans one.
Oh, I see. And that is the 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 measure in the TDM would link with the mitigation measure in the mitigated neck deck.
That's correct.
I see. That makes sense.
Just to make sure there's, you know, no inconsistency with that change to bring.
I would support that. And I like how we're looking at both the Sequa document and the transportation demand management plan so that they are aligned. And I appreciate the comment from the attorney that this is something in our discretion. Vice Chair Roof, that's a very good, good suggestion.
Other than that, I thought the TDM and the measures that they are proposing, you know, it looks good. It's just that having a check on it in three years would make me feel a lot better.
Commissioner Clements, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to get clear. I get clarification from staff. Was the five year check back part of the TDM kind of standardized program? Or was this just proposed as part of this candidate's proposed TDM plan?
It is our standard requirement in the municipal code is the five year.
And so does some kind of finding need to be made in order to vary from that five years?
You do have that since we're relying on compliance with the TDM plan in the to get compliance with the VMT. But you would like to see that in a three year timeframe in the Sequa document. And that's why it's more appropriate to place it there. Yes.
I see. So the code can rely on the Sequa document and the Sequa document does not need a particular particular finding. But I also, I I find that public input being at least somewhat concerned about potential impacts. I think at least warrants us to discuss it or check in at that time. Just to just to clarify then, I think I read that the five years concept was a driveway check and that. So what is the ramification? If the TDM goals are not being met at the time of the check in, are there penalties associated or is it simply a, you know, here's where you are and let's redirect course in in order to meet the goals?
Yeah, that we would want to see more measures in order to meet the goals. And then I think failure to do so, I'd have to defer to the city attorney. We may be in a code enforcement situation where they're, you know, not in compliance with the approved plans. And there's an opportunity to revoke the permits.
And just to be clear, it is the responsibility of the building owner to make sure that the transportation demand management is carried out and that they would contract with whoever is occupying the building in order to make sure that that happens. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Or provide the services themselves?
Either one. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I agree. If there if it takes less than five years to kind of establish per staff revised kind of transportation patterns, if you will. And if we think that that tenants will be in the building within five, you know, within a couple of years after the completion of the building, hopefully right away after the completion of the building. You know, I I will trust staff's judgment as to what the correct timing or what the best timing is to kind of re reexamine whether the TDM measures are being effective based on advice from our consultants and your experience with the TDM program. But I'd also like to hear from the applicant on their thoughts. If that's okay, Chair.
It's okay. And I think I saw a hand up from the applicant. Mr. Sanandaji, would you like to comment?
Yes, sorry, I I wasn't quite following the etiquette of raising the hand. So I didn't want to interrupt your your conversation. But we plan on actively monitoring this regardless of the requirement contained herein. And the I appreciate the commission recognizing that we would want the building to be fully occupied in order to actually have a real measure. And so we're in favor of adjusting the timeline since it's three years after, I believe it's COO, so completion of the project. I we just confirm that to make sure that it's not from the date of approval, which which would be too short given construction period required. So.
May I ask a follow up question? Is there ever, you know, per the candidates or the applicants comment, is there ever an alternative threshold where it is a certain amount of time after full occupancy of the building? That the measurement could be done? I just want to be sensitive to the fact that it's possible that, you know, a tenant can move in and then actually not have it fully occupied. So I actually wouldn't, you know, for the city's benefit, I wouldn't want the evaluation done too early. I would want to make sure it was completely occupied with as many, you know, employees as was going to be there as we're going to be there.
Do we propose that it would be subject to some percentage of lease up or stabilization if you have occupancy of the building? And a set period, you know, call it a 36 month window thereafter?
Yeah, I would ask for staff's thoughts and our counsel. That makes sense to me.
Yeah. I think Greg Rubens here. And also, I just was looking at the the code. It's sort of a organic process to it. There is a five year review that the code talks about. But it does say that annually there is to be information submitted to the director. So it'll 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 the approach will lead to the three year review that you put in there, which is, you know, my rate of it's not prohibited. But the five year review likely still be required for ordinance. But you'll have the annual reviews and then your your mitigation monitoring plan, three year review, and then you'll have the five year review. I think that's how it'll will work in this instance.
And there are no prescribed penalties for not meeting the TDM goals at this time.
I mean, I think Lisa was correct that it could lead to code enforcement. But in my experience, the the purpose of the review is to suggest modified or substituted conditions that would allow to meet the goals of the of the plan. So if there's some changed circumstances or not, not as anticipated impacts occur, we do have some ability in these reviews to to modify the the term.
I would I would hope that all of us would be on that side, Greg, as you state, with just trying to make sure that the programs, that the the mitigations are working as planned and that there is that we're not really exposing the applicant to kind of additional potential downsides by asking for additional monitoring. And so, as you said, there will be annual reports that will, I assume, kind of indicate for potentially, you know, the level of occupancy. And so it would be knowable if the three year review three years from COO was appropriate at that time. But, you know, all with the objective of trying to achieve the goals of the transportation, transportation domain management program.
Yeah. And 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 just to be clear, the it's the the annual reviews go to the director, not to the planning commission, but you're asking that the three year review come up to you guys.
Oh, I'd ask the vice chair if that was his intent.
Yes, that that sounds good. And I'm not too worried about the occupancy thing because if three years isn't quite long enough, then we have the five year five year one still on the books. So assuming that the timer starts at the completion of project, I don't know how long it takes to do the to build the building, but that could be, that could be a year or two. So assuming that it the timer starts.
Structure is going to be about a year.
Yeah, yeah. So if the, does anybody know whether the that three now three year formerly five year period is triggered at the project completion or what? That would make sense.
Commissioner Roof, from our reading, it's it's from the issuance of the Certificate of Occupants.
Okay. Okay.
It's based on occupancy. Because if there's no one in the building, you know, there, there's no tracts.
Yeah. Then it keeps it simple. If we have three, I, I've said, I suggest, um, three-year and, and five-year, and we don't even have to, um, uh, the occupancy, um, necessary to me, but.
Um, may I just clarify what Lisa just said? Um, whether or not a building is occupied does not mean that it has gotten or not gotten its certificate of occupancy. It's may, that indicates it is ready to be occupied, not that necessarily that it is occupied, correct?
Correct. But, um, typically with these buildings, we're seeing that they're, they're not doing the full tenant improvements until they have a tenant secured. Um, and so it's been following that based on the certificate of occupancy that then the tenant moves in. But you are correct.
Sense. Thank you. Well, with that, I would say, I would support the vice chair's, um, almost motion. If you wanted to make one.
Any other discussion on the transportation demand management plan, uh, before we, um, entertain a motion?
Um, may I make one other, I, I guess, question? Perhaps that would have been better earlier, but comment, which is, sorry, when we talk about alternative forms of transportation, um, it's important to think about those with limited mobility. And so e-bikes, um, could work, but really only for the physically able, probably who are willing to go fast and don't have any, um, you know, physical maladies that would prevent that from being possible. So I do want to, um, I guess, ask, is there, are there alternatives, um, in the TDM plan for people who have limited mobility? Just about.
Does staff have a, a comment on that or a response?
Just looking through, um, the TDM plan real quick. Um, sometimes it's the, um, guaranteed ride home, which is probably the most applicable. Um, you know, there's carpool, vanpool ride matching services. That we could add, oh, yeah, it is in our, their commuter service has the guaranteed ride home program. I think that was probably the most applicable.
Um, just clarifying though, has, the applicant has selected that as a measure?
Um, I believe so.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Didn't want to interject again. Uh, yes, we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Any, any additional discussion on the transportation demand management plan before we look to a motion? All right, um, Lisa, if you could put the motion up on the screen.
I guess I would be pleased to make the formal motion and I might need some help with the wording on the, um, on the condition, um, I moved that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan and grant approval for design, review, variance, conditional use permit and transportation demand management plan for the development of a new one-two-two-four-five-five square feet building at seven-seven-seven Industrial Road, APN zero-four-six dash one-zero-zero-dash-three-six-zero and zero-four-six-one-zero-zero-zero-seven-zero and zero-four-six-one-zero-zero-zero-eight-zero for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and with the conditions in the code compliance and variant certificate. And with the condition that we discussed, which is to, in the mitigation monitoring plan, to have the, um, three-year, um, assessment as well as the original five-year, um, in both, in both places that, uh, Lisa was mentioning needed to be, um, included. So maybe this staff could help with the wording on this additional condition that we're asking for.
Um, yes, it's to amend, um, mitigation measure trans one, item eight to require a three-year and a five-year review. And then also amend the condition number forty-three in the co-compliance certificate to require a three-year and a five-year review.
So I would like to incorporate what Lisa just said into the formal motion that I'm making. Does that work?
I think that works. Uh,
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion before I ask Lisa for a roll call? All right, uh, Lisa.
I wanted to say one thing, which is that we had a pretty big job tonight. There was a lot of, of, uh, questions that we had to assess and the staff report, uh, was very thorough and it, it let us get through, uh, what, um, was a large volume of material very efficiently. So I wanted to say thanks to the staff for making it easy for us to understand that the findings that the, um, e-evidence supported the findings that we were making. And so, um, so thank you for that. Uh, okay, go ahead.
All said, I completely agree. Good comment.
I agree.
I agree.
All right, uh, Lisa, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Clements?
Hi.
Commissioner Bradley?
Hi.
Vice Chair Roof?
Hi.
And Chair Garvey.
Hi.
I'd like to take a minute and thank everyone from the public who not only listened in tonight, but, uh, chose to comment. Um, I'd like to thank staff for, uh, an echoing Vice Chair Roof's, uh, comment. It just did an outstanding job on, on a really, a big project. And I'd like to congratulate the applicants on their project and, uh, wish them good luck, uh, Mr. Sanandaji and his team. You did an outstanding job. This, this was a lot of work and you did it. And, um, best of luck to you. This project, I think, will be a very attractive addition to our community. Now, we, we appreciate, uh, your project. Thank you and best of luck.
Thank you so very much for all of your consideration and time and, and to staff especially for just being such great partners. We look forward to delivering a successful project together and coming before you with, uh, hopefully many more projects that, that are beneficial to the community too.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on now to the next item, reports, correspondence and general information. Report on recent city council actions.
Yes, good evening, Comis-, Commissars, Chair Garvey. Uh, I have just a couple of things I wanted to relay to the commission concerning recent city council actions. And the first one being is that the council recently passed an urgency ordinance concerning, um, the protected tree ordinance, which is located in the city zoning ordinance. And, um, in this case, um, the urgency ordinance will be effective, uh, forty-five days and there is an option to extend it. And it's my understanding that it is likely to be extended so that staff can work on making some revisions, uh, to that, um, to the protected tree, uh, requirements and provisions contained in our code. Um, the second thing that I wanted to mention, um, concerns the downtown. And, um, as many of you might, um, recall, the closure of Laurel Street was set to expire this September and the council, um, decided to extend that for one year. So it will be extended, um, beginning, um, in September of twenty-twenty-one for one full year. So that'll take us to the middle of September twenty-twenty-two. Um, and those are all the recent city council actions that I wanted to share with the commission this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to planning commission comments or reports. Any comments from fellow commissioners?
Uh, Bradley here. Uh, the residential design review committee is going to have a special meeting. I believe it's, um, June twenty-ninth, one-thirty in the afternoon because we have four cases, or five cases build up now.
All right. Thank you for letting us know that. Commissioner Bradley. Uh, Vice Chair Roof, I see your hand is up.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of attending the Eastside Vision Workshop that was held on June ninth at the city, uh, planning department, um, sponsored. And, um, it was very educational for me. Uh, it was enjoyable to participate in and, um, and I heard a lot of feedback from community members, different perspectives, uh, that, that'll be really valuable to help me ask good questions, uh, when stuff gets to the planning commission.
All right. Thank you. Any other commission comments or reports? All right, moving on to correspondence. Lisa?
None this evening.
All right, moving on to planning staff comments, reports and updates of current projects.
Yes, I have a couple of things to share this evening. Um, one, um, is at our next planning commission, uh, meeting date, which again will be on July sixth, uh, due to the holiday. So it'll be on a Tuesday. We do have now calendared, um, the election of officers. So I think it's looking like it'll be a pretty light meeting, but it'll be important that we get this, um, this administrative task done so that we can get the new officers seated, um, in which case they would take their seats at the next planning commission hearing scheduled for July nineteenth. So that's just a reminder. And I think, uh, we'll now have a quorum so that all commissioners can attend and, uh, be part of that discussion. Um, on the meeting of July nineteenth, um, one item that, uh, staff is going to be bringing back to you, uh, based upon the commission's previous request is a presentation on some of the bills, the planning related bills that were introduced this year. And I know that there are, um, there was definitely some interest in the commission. So we, we, um, we suggested that why don't we wait a little bit to see how those bills are sort of shaping up? So we will be having a presentation on that by Aaron Athan. He is a principal at Good City, uh, company and he will be making that presentation on the nineteenth. Um, the other item that we have on the agenda is ten-thirty Britain. Um, so I think those will be the primary items or the only items, um, it's looking like for the nineteenth, but both of those will, will be, um, um, you know, will, will be sufficient to have a, a, a good meeting. Um, and then sort of moving forward, um, are the next meeting after that would be on August second. And on the agenda for that evening, we have calendared, um, the climate mitigation and adaptation plan. And this is something that as soon as the draft comes out, um, I will inform the commission so you kind of can get a head start looking at that. And we'll be working with staff from other, um, city departments and divisions to make that presentation. And this would be a recommendation that they would be looking for to the city council, which is the, um, final decision-making body on that document. Um, in addition to the climate mitigation and adaptation plan, um, we may be bringing forward the local hazard mitigation plan, which is more of a collaboration, uh, with the county. Um, it's sort of an implementing document out of the safety element and it's related both to safety and climate mitigation and adaptation. So that's on August the second. And then after, following that meeting on August sixteenth, we will be having, um, a summer recess. So you can mark your calendars for August sixteenth, that there will be no planning commission, uh, meeting that evening. And then following that meeting, we would return, um, to, um, we would return back on September the seventh, which is Tuesday. But having said that, um, I did want to touch upon the schedule of the Eastside Innovation District Vision Plan. As most of you recall, um, this plan, um, will be taken forward, um, in the month of September, um, to formal hearings with the planning commission and city council. So that is what we expect to happen in September, where we would be taking the vision plan, uh, before, uh, the commission to get your recommendation to the city council and then completing the project, um, as planned on time, um, by the end of September. So basically what this means is that because all of this is to happen in September, uh, where everything is falling is that we're looking, uh, to study sessions during the month of August. And I know I just said that we, um, are giving the planning commission a summer recess on the sixteenth. However, I wanted to give you all the heads up that most likely we're going to need to pull the commission for a study session in late August. Um, we're currently working with our consultant team right now, Perkins and Will, on the calendar to really bring this project forward to the finish line. Uh, but I wanted to bring it to your attention this evening so that if, um, anyone has any conflict whatsoever, I'd rather hear from you early on so we can make the necessary accommodations. Again, this would be for the study session, but not the formal hearing, uh, that we would have in the month of September. So, um, just a little bit on that. And then, um, as Commissioner Roof or Vice Chair Roof just mentioned, uh, we did have a meeting, um, on the Eastside Innovation District Vision Plan, uh, recently on June ninth. We do have some materials up on the website. So if you haven't, um, had a chance to look and are curious, it's just a reminder that those, that information, the video recordings, the chat transcript and, and all of the input, um, is intended to keep you informed along the way, as if you attended the meeting. It's always nice to be able to watch the playback. Um, that is all I have this evening. Um, and I will follow up with an email. I know I provided a lot of detail on what's coming up ahead. So I'll just go ahead and send out an email just to get it all out in writing. Um, so thank you. That's, that's it for me.
Thank you, Lisa. A lot is happening and a lot is happening, especially in August and September. All right.
Thank you, Chair. May I just clarify with Lisa, when you say a study session in late August, do you know which weeks you're looking at?
Let me just pull up my calendar here. Um,
And if not, that's fine.
Yeah, I think what we would hope, uh, to do is probably actually the very last week of August, which would be the thirtieth, the thirty-first, you know, which is basically the Monday, Tuesday. Um, I don't know exactly which days, but, um, if there's anything that's sort of kind of on your calendar right now and you know, it's going to be problematic, you know, please let me know. We want to do our best to accommodate all of you. So, you know, while nothing is, um, we haven't even penciled it in. We just have a targeted timeframe. So, um, so we will let you know is, is hopefully by the end of this week, we'll, we're having a meeting this week to talk about it. So.
Thank you.
I might have a, a conflict then with the vacation, but, um, if, um, calling in was an option, I might be able to make that happen. So, um,
Yeah, I think we're still looking at a, a Zoom meeting for that.
Yeah, then I might be able to make it work.
Great.
Okay. But I, but we'll communicate by email.
Great. Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. And, uh, with that, I believe we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next time.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks to both Lises.
Exactly.